Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President. An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items today. I'd encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least to vibrate.
Item six, resolution to approve the final plat for Indian Point Replat Four located southeast of 189th Street and George Miller Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven and eight can be considered together for Coventry Wood located northeast of 216th and Harrison Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item eight, a resolution to approve a waiver to the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan.
Public hearing and vote on number seven and eight are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and the developer. Simply here to answer any questions that you might have. This is on the northeast corner of 216th and Harrison Street. It's a 79-acre subdivision with about 149 single-family lots and one multifamily lot. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items nine through 12 can be considered together for North Streams Replat One located southwest of 202nd and 9th Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items nine and 10, ordinances to rezone this property from DR District and R4 District to DR District and R4 District. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 12, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items nine, 10, 11, and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the city council. Jeff Elliott, Woodsonia Real Estate, 20010 Manderson, here to represent the applicant, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the 5902 North Street Industrial Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 5902 North 9th Street in an amount up to $3,200,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This is a new construction project on a vacant 11-acre parcel. Pardon me.
Yeah. Wrong visual direction.
Next project. This one's up by the airport. On North 9th Street, north of the Stores Expressway. So it's new construction and industrial use. Warehousing, distribution, about 160,000 square feet of building area. 161 parking stalls on site. Plus room for about 13 semi trucks. Be primarily warehousing and distribution. Appropriate for the airport area. Project is a Greenslake Development managed by Clay Vanderhiden. Total project investment is about $21.7 million. They're asking for $3,200,000 in TIF support, and it's appropriate land use. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Matt Dwyer, Greenslake Development, 3555 Farnham Street. Here to answer any questions. I think Clay and our other partner, Denny Sisco, are here as well if anybody wants to get specific on the industrial stuff, but I think I can handle from here. Jay Lund is not here. I think Jay and Juanita have spent some time talking about this leading up to the hearing here, so happy to do my part, though. Good to see you all.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Hi. I think this is an excellent opportunity for the city of Omaha as well as the community overall in general. Thank you for bringing this opportunity to us. I would like to go ahead and move that we make a motion to move on to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the Diggs Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 522 South 30th Street and 522 Park Avenue in an amount up to $1,424,994.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, City Planning again, and I'll take you to this site here. The Diggs Apartments involves a pair of parcels located on either side of South 30th Street. The one to the west will be developed as a surface parking lot to provide parking for a four-story, 43-unit apartment building, market-rate apartments. This is an Uptown Properties development managed by Stephen Held. Total project investment is about $8.6 million. They're requesting $1,424,994 in TIF support. It's in the urban core housing and mobility plan area, which means that some of the TIF revenues will be going towards the city's streetcar system. It's an appropriate land use, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Michael Carter, 11506 Nicholas Street, Suite 103, on behalf of the developer here. Just here to ask you questions if you have any regarding the project.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm not opposed to every TIF project. The previous one, I think, probably is a blighted area. I am opposed to this project because I don't believe it's a blighted area. And I believe if the market calls for that many more apartment buildings, that private owners that will rent those apartments out can probably build it if they didn't, if they really wanted to. There's been articles in the World Herald and articles in the Reader Magazine, we have a representative of them here today, about TIF and the problems with TIF. It's not always very well explained or very well accepted. And I know campaign dollars have gone to some of the council members from developers. I don't have a list of how many developers we have in Omaha. There are some outside developers. A lot of these projects maybe would not get built if not for TIF. Maybe they don't need to get built. Maybe we don't need to have the city participate in it. When you say city's participation, it sort of means me, one way or another. And when you add up the millions and millions of dollars over how many years, probably billions, I just had a thought yesterday when I drove by some finished rented apartments that had the word "nautilus" on them. A real estate company can be a developer. A lot of them probably are. And they get TIF, they turn around and sell apartments and manage apartments. Now, that's real transparent, folks, so I'm against this one because I don't believe that that area is blighted or severely blighted. And I'm trying to keep it away from my neighborhood. I see from your maps that that neighborhood is close to the blighted or severely blighted areas, but it doesn't look that way to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Counselor, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Michael Carter.
Michael.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to support this, and I've driven by that property. And again, today, if you wouldn't mind, there's some couches and a picnic table that are sitting in the middle of that lot on Park Ave. Maybe see to it that they get those hauled away. I don't know when they got it out there.
I will get on it right away when I make a call.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Appreciate it. That's a, I'll be supporting this today. That's a good addition for that neighborhood. It's been, over the years, even before I was on the council, it's being redeveloped. I know I talked to some developers about some affordable housing opportunity on the south end of Park Ave, about a mile south of this, but I appreciate you being here today, and I'll look forward to supporting this.
Thank you, and I will make sure that they get on that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll second the motion and second the couch removal. No further lights? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for southeast 180 Maple Crossing located southeast of 180th Streets and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. In this particular case, it's Costco. With me today, Costco representative Brian Whalen, as well as Katie Underwood and Shane King of Olson. They're the consulting engineers on this particular project. So I do have the, turn the overhead on. Please, thank you. I have the site, which is the southeast corner of 180th and West Maple Road here. It's 36 acres. It's currently zoned ag. And this shows you kind of what the surrounding zoning is. To the north, it's ag, but it's currently, there's a mixed-use development coming through the process right now on the northeast corner. There's already mixed-use to the west, and then there's R4 to the south, and R5 and R6 to the east. Today, what's before you is the preliminary plat request, and so eventually what will be coming down the pike here is a mixed-use rezoning request with the final plat after it goes to, after the final plat goes to Planning Board. So it's important to note that this particular intersection at 180th and West Maple Road is 165-acre mixed-use center. So besides a metro mixed-use center, 165-acre mixed-use center is the largest mixed-use center that we have under our master plan. And what that essentially provides is with this triangle, and I don't have the future land use map here, but I do have, just in general discussing it, there's a 165-acre mixed-use triangle here. Now, what that means is 165 acres surrounding this intersection, a half-mile north, half-mile east, half-mile south, and a half-mile west can be used for commercial mixed-use acres. And so currently, we have 100 acres being utilized at this particular intersection. That means it's already zoned and already spoken for of the 165 acres. There are 64 to 67 acres available at this particular intersection, and this project will utilize about 29 acres. And so if this project's approved, there's still 33.72 acres remaining for mixed-use allowed acres at this particular intersection. I would just note that the northwest corner has a big drainage way that goes through it, so it's probably not a great mixed-use area. So this 165-acre mixed-use triangle is not 100% utilized, and it probably will not be either with this particular development. So, which brings me to the actual request. Again, this is a preliminary plat, but I think in order to understand the preliminary plat, I want you to see kind of the whole development and what's being proposed here. So Costco is developing the entire 36-acre site, which is on the, again, on the southeast corner of 180th and West Maple Road. They're proposing seven buildable lots and two outlots. The one outlot here is a three-acre detention basin at this location here, so that will never be built upon. It'll be a permanent stormwater detention basin. And the other outlot is what's required under the master plan and the Urban Design Code for green corners in mixed-use areas, and that outlot is up here in the northwest corner of the development. Costco's proposing 160,000-square-foot store at this location shown here. The only other use that we know at this point in time is the Costco store itself and then the fueling station that they have, that they will operate, own, and maintain here at this particular lot, which I believe is Lot 5. And this layout is a lot different than the one at 126th and Dodge, although it's doubled the number of pumps and fuel stations. It has over 200 feet more of stacking. They also have one access in and one access out to provide for better circulation within the motor fuel station area. And the balance of the lots will just be used for general commercial mixed-use type uses, and there's no one, you know, planned for that that will be marketed at some point down the road. This lot right here, which I believe is Lot 3, or actually Lot 2, that's shown as office, which there's a 10% office space requirement in a mixed-use area, and so that provides for the office component of the mixed-use area. So it's important to note that all of the activity, and Costco was very careful about having all the activity really be in front of the store between West Maple Road and the single-family adjacent neighborhood to the south. And so you notice that the parking area, the parking field, everything's on the north side buffered by the building itself. The truck docks are all on the north side, and nothing really is on the backside at all, keeping it away from the neighborhood. And I also wanted to point out that Costco controls, they own all their trucks, all their large delivery trucks. So this shows you the way the truck deliveries will work, and I think it's important to note that they, this particular store will be supplied from a warehouse from Awatana, Minnesota. Hopefully, I said that correctly, the name, but in any event, the trucks will be coming southbound on I-35, westbound to I-80, and then northbound to I-680, and then westbound on West Maple Road or Highway 64, and they will be entering off West Maple Road at a signalized intersection that I'll get into later. Everything, the truck movements will all come in from this direction, will make the turnaround, back in into the front side of the store at this location, and then they will exit. And this, again, will be a signalized intersection. I suppose they could come through here, which is a right-in, right-out only, and I'll get into the traffic patterns later, and they could exit up here on 180th Street going to northbound only because that's a right-in, right-out only to a signalized intersection at 180th and West Maple Road. So that's the truck movement. And again, Costco controls their own delivery trucks. The only ones they don't control are the small, local-type delivery trucks, but they control them enough to say that you're not going to be using Emmett Street down here. At least, they'll be highly discouraged in doing so. So from that, I do have some vantage points. I won't get too caught up in the details here, but... So this has a number of cross-sections that I'll show you here, and so this first cross-section, just in, all I'm trying to do here is show you, you know, how Costco's laid this out in relationship to the adjacent properties. And so this first cross-section, cross-section number one, shows, you know, what the distance is between the adjacent building, and this is to the east, the apartment building, showing the 30-foot buffer, showing about 48 feet that's in the rear setback of the adjacent property. And then there's quite a bit of additional buffer that really isn't accounted for. You've got the drive lane, and then some more green space, and then the actual parking area, so there's no building on this cross-section one. So then you get to cross-section two, which actually shows the building in relationship to the east, or the property to the east, which is multifamily. And that's showing the, about 50 feet again from the back of the building, then a 30-foot buffer, and then 113 feet from the 30-foot buffer to the actual building itself, the Costco building. So you can see there's quite a bit of distance between the adjacent building to the east and the Costco building on the east side, which it's actually, when you add all that up, it's about 194 feet from building to building on the east side of the development. Then if you look at this cross-section three here, and that's the closest area or the most narrow area to the adjacent residential neighborhood here, and so this is actually looking east, and so this would be the houses here at this location, and it will have about 51 feet between the rear setback and the street to the property line of Costco, and then there'll be an additional 30-foot buffer. There'll be additional green space, and then a drive lane that's immediately behind the building, and that's cross-section three. Cross-section four, and actually, cross-section three, and this is the closest that the building would be to any adjacent user. It's about 125 feet away, so it's quite a distance away from any adjacent residential house. Then you get to cross-section four at this particular location here, and that is shown by the single-family residential house to the south, the nearest one. Then there's about 65 feet, which includes the backyard plus the street, and then you have an additional 30-foot buffer, and then you have an additional 71 feet to the building. So at that particular location, cross-section number four, you're looking at about 165 feet from the nearest house to the building. So again, quite a distance between them. And then lastly, there's a cross-section number five that's shown here, and that, again, from the nearest residential house to the south, is about 70 feet, and then with, between the rear setback of the house, the street, Emmett Street, then the 30-foot buffer, and then an additional 60 feet between landscape and parking area and drive lane to the building. So under section five, you're looking at about 161 feet to the nearest house to the south. So I just want to give you kind of a relationship of the building to the adjacent neighbor, neighborhood to the south, and also to the apartment building to the east. Which then, that brings me to the building elevations themselves. Again, this being a mixed-use area, the Urban Design Code applies for sided architectures required. These are the elevations. We'll have to meet the Urban Design Code with respective material choices and overall design, so we'll be working with the planning department to make sure that we're in compliance with the Urban Design Code on the actual architecture. Which then brings me to the public improvement plans, which are probably the most important thing that we'll probably talk about today. But again, here is the site. You've got Evans Street coming through on the north side, that again, on 180th Street. At that location, it's a right-in, right-out only, so there's no full movement. There's actually going to be a raised median at that location, and so the truck traffic, or I'm sorry, the traffic, the automobile traffic will be coming in right only and right out only at that location. There is a full-movement intersection at 177th and West Maple Road that will be signalized at this location. And then again, that's where I showed you the truck traffic will all be coming into the site, into the front, and loading, and going back out onto West Maple Road. There's also a full-movement, of course, signalized intersection at 180th and West Maple Road, and then there's another signalized full-movement intersection at 180th and Emmett Street, and that mirrors the mixed-use area that's already been approved, that's immediately to the west of 180th Street at that location. So there's a dedicated left turn at Emmett Street, and then there's a right turn and a through movement, which mirrors the other side of 180th and Emmett into the adjacent mixed-use area. There's a dedicated right-turn lane that goes into the right-in, right-out area. There's a traffic study that has been performed, done, submitted to the Public Works Department. Public Works is in the process of reviewing the traffic study. This development will have to comply with all the public improvements, public infrastructure that's required by the traffic study that's approved by Public Works, and we fully intend to do that. With the county's project of 180th Street, there's also a 10-foot-wide trail that will be constructed along 180th Street to the north, all along the frontage of this particular development. And we did have a neighborhood meeting prior to Planning Board, and there was about 85 to 90 people present, I would say, and we had quite a bit of discussion about this particular development. We also had about a two-hour Planning Board meeting regarding this development. The primary, I think, concern was the access onto Emmett Street. And what I would say about that is that the master plan actually requires connectivity, and we think connectivity is a good thing for this particular development, and I think it's a good thing for all developments. And the reason why, you know, we say that and we think that, and the Planning Department, Public Works Department, the master plan agrees with that, is that it, first of all, provides for better dispersion of traffic. So you've got traffic coming out on 177th and West Maple Road. You've got traffic coming right in, right out at 180th and Evans, and then, of course, you have the other full-movement intersection at 180th and Emmett Street that's signalized. What this allows is the neighborhood to the south and to the east to use the internal street systems to actually locate or enter into the shopping center without going on to the major arterials and coming back around and having kind of a circuitous route, if you will, to get to the shopping center. No one wants that. The direct access really is to benefit the neighborhood as well as to provide access off of 180th Street at Emmett, a full-movement intersection to come in this way for automobile traffic that wants to use the center. And so if you, we've got a number of kind of aerial photographs that are shown here, and we can zoom in and zoom out as much as you want if you have questions about this. But you can see that the street system to the south goes nowhere, so it's not a through neighborhood. I mean, someone that goes in there either lives there or they're lost, but no one's going to be, you know, driving through this neighborhood to get somewhere because there's nowhere to go. So people that are accessing the shopping center really are going to be coming off of either West Maple Road or 180th Street at Emmett or at Evans, and so they're not going to be coming through this particular neighborhood. What this really allows for is this neighborhood to, and really all these surrounding properties down here, to access the internal street systems to get to the shopping center without being required, to go out onto a major arterial, go all the way up, go into a right-in, right-out, and then either go out to the north because that would be the only way out, or go to the signalized intersection at 177th and Maple Road and make your way back through HWS Cleveland or some other circuitous route to get back home. And that doesn't make any sense because the whole idea behind connectivity is that we're not putting all the traffic out onto the arterials, that we're allowing the neighborhood to use their internal streets. to use their internal street systems to get to the shopping center. And then, of course, the people that are coming from the east or west on Maple Street can get into the shopping center, and anyone going north or south on 180th Street can get into the shopping center. But this particular layout certainly does not promote traffic going into the neighborhood. So I just wanted to point that out. Again, we're complying with the master plan and the requirements of the master plan and what's required from Planning Department as well as Public Works. So with that, I'm happy to respond to any opposition and also happy to answer any questions. Again, we have the whole team here, including a traffic engineer, if you have any particular questions about the traffic.
Okay. Thanks for that overview.
Thank you.
Stay close. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Elafson. That's E-L-O-F-S-O-N-10050 Regency Circle, Suite 200. My grandchildren call me G., and I'm here to advocate for them. Emma is eight, Macy is six, and Rory Declan is three and a half. Rory Declan and my granddaughters live two houses to the south of the access point on 178th Street. So where this plan dumps traffic out, it dumps it right on to the street where my grandchildren live. I don't believe that the city has done anything to try and minimize the risk of, forgive me, a death of a child with that particular intersection. At minimum, it seems to me it ought to be a right-in, right-out only. My preference would be that it not be allowed to be there at all. This evening, about 7:00 o'clock, I'm going to be at Manchester Elementary. Emma and her classmates, I think there'll be probably about 60 of them, are going to be singing to me and others' parents. Manchester Elementary is close in this neighborhood, and children walk to that school from Emmett Street. It's going to take a lot of load. It's going to have a lot of load. And as I said, I don't think the city has done anything to try and protect the children. I'm asking that the city do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. I don't see any lights. I think we can move on to councilmember questions.
Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of Costco. The only thing I would say is that, you know, this being 165-acre mixed-use center, all these street systems were designed with this type of use in mind. I mean, that's why we have these mixed-use nodes in our future land use map and our master plan, because people need to know where these types of developments are going to be located. So this is completely consistent, and this is a condition that really occurs all over our city. In fact, that public improvement plan that I had here, I'll show you. So if you take a look at this public improvement plan that I showed you, what was occurring on 168th Street is essentially the same exact condition that occurs at 180th Street. So this is the through street that goes all the way through internally and really connects 168th with 180th Street. And almost every, you know, mixed-use center that is in our future land use map has access, the full movement at the quarter mile, I'm sorry, at the half-mile full-movement signalized intersection, and then the right-in, right-out at the eighth mile. So this is our master plan. This is totally master plan compliant with respect to the layout and the uses that are contemplated by this particular development. So I just, I wanted to add that, that the street systems have been designed for this type of use. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Mr. Jovan. The question that the gentleman just raised regarding his grandchildren, earlier in your presentation, you mentioned that there was going to be a traffic study being completed or done, and that whatever the outcome is for that, that you were happy to comply with that. Will that address some of his concerns?
I have the traffic engineer here, and also I believe that Jeff Reeselman is also here with Public Works. So I'd encourage you to ask questions, because I think they, Public Works, have reviewed the traffic study at this point in time. And so I think they might have some recommendations, I don't know, regarding Emmett Street. But if you
Hello. Jeffrey Reeselman, City of Omaha, Public Works Traffic Division. Regarding the traffic study, it primarily focuses on the arterial system and the capacity available based on the number of trips related to the development. So the majority of the study is focusing on 180th and also on West Maple. There's some, you know, the actual connection point on Emmett is another study intersection. So is HWS Cleveland, which happens to be the street that the school is on at Manchester Elementary. But it primarily is in that quadrant of the square mile that the study is focused on. It does not look at safety or speeds. It's looking at capacity. It's a capacity analysis study.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And, you know, I too would be concerned if Whispering, if Manchester Elementary was closer to there, but I can't find any, when I look at the map and from where Emmett Street is, Manchester's on Cleveland Boulevard. I mean, you'd have to wind around. You'd almost have to be lost going by the elementary school if you were a Costco shopper. And I know we ran into this issue. Mr. President, you might have to correct me. It was five or six years ago, I want to say, maybe more. But around five or six years ago, when they were building the apartments next to the Costco at 126th and Dodge, they required an entrance to go into the Candlewood neighborhood at Burt Street. And the Candlewood neighborhood was very upset because they were afraid traffic was going to dump into Candlewood. And I have to tell you, the people that actually led that opposition are now happy that the road's actually there. The only people that use the road are the people that live in Candlewood, and they find it very convenient that they don't have to go around by Hy-Vee or around by the Menards and get on the major roads in order to get to the Costco. And so it actually makes it better, because it alleviates 120th, 132nd, and Portal Road from the additional traffic from all of the Candlewood. And I would say that it's three neighborhoods, Candlewood, Ridgefield, Bryn Mawr, well, and Miracle Hills. So you've got four neighborhoods all back there. And it's actually been better. The people that were opposed to it are actually glad it's there now. So I see that as really this road, there's no dumping of traffic. It's only going to be traffic from the people that live in the neighborhood. Otherwise, if somebody takes Emmett and goes into the neighborhood that doesn't live in the neighborhood, I guarantee you they'll probably never do it again. That's what people have done in Candlewood, because they just start winding around the neighborhood. It doesn't take them to the main road. So the other entrances and exits are going to take you on to either 180th or onto Maple. And that's what the majority of the people are going to use, except the people that live in the neighborhood. And so that's where I think it makes it a lot more convenient for the people that live there to not have to go on the major roads to get there. And I say that with some experience. I was, I voted no on it the last time Larry remembers, and we had a giant meeting. But I have to say now, after having experienced the outcome, the connecting road was actually a good thing for the people of the neighborhood, and they don't have, there's no truck traffic that's going down there from Costco. Costco actually has been a very good partner. We've had a number of issues with the backup of traffic because of the gas pumps. There aren't enough, and we've had backups along Portal Road. It's been kind of bad, so I'm glad to see that there's, they kind of learned from that maybe planning mistake from the one on 126th and Dodge, and now are taking steps to rectify that so that it's not going to back up on any major road. So that was, that was kind of my main concern, is that we don't make that same, kind of same mistake. But I have to say that the management of Costco has always been very responsive, and they've been great to work with, with different issues and problems that we've had going on in there. So I at least find Costco, both the local management and their corporate management, to actually at least be responsive to us when we contact them. So for that reason, and for the reason that the connecting road at the last Costco did not have the negative impact that a lot of people thought, that's the reason I'll be supporting this, because I don't see anybody going around, and I don't see the impact on Manchester. And you know what? If we find out that somehow in the future there is, we can always do a traffic study, and we can always talk about doing one right-in, right-out. But here, I think the neighbors will be very happy they can get into the Costco. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Mr. President, Mr. Jovan, couple of questions for you.
Yes, Mr. Bagley.
Good afternoon. Larry, on the south end, Emmett Street, you mentioned, if I wind around of Costco and I go down 177th Street, can I get out anywhere else besides on Emmett Street if I get lost down there? In other words, is that neighborhood a dead end, that traffic going through there, coming out of Costco, are they not going to get out there?
They're not really going to, because if you see 178th Street runs along here, and then it has, you have to get all the way down here to meet up with HWS Cleveland before you can get back out onto 180th at this location, or go all the way back out through the neighborhood, wind yourself around to get to 168th Street. So it's a pretty circuitous route, if you will, you know, to get to a major arterial. So like Amy said, I think I agree with her. You make that mistake once, and you don't do it again, because otherwise you find yourself lost in this neighborhood trying to get out. And so I think that will be a quick learning curve, if you will, once you go into this center. So no, it really goes nowhere. And I've got, I don't know if it's easier to see on this aerial photograph as well, but you can see, this would be 78th Street here at this location. You have to wind yourself all the way down to here, to HWS Cleveland, before you can really make any headway to the north, at West Maple Road here where HWS Cleveland hits, or over here where it intersects with 180th Street. So again, I think you're lost if you're in here.
Okay. Thanks for answering that. And also, the entrances you're saying are off 180th Street and on the west, and then on the north side, it's 177th Avenue, is that...
177th Street, correct.
Okay.
Which is a full-movement intersection, signalized.
Okay. Councilmember Melton mentioned the challenges they had, and I shop at that Costco. I go to Papillion a little bit, but I go to the one on Dodge a lot. And I believe Public Works worked with the Costco management team on formulating a better plan to get in the traffic off of Portal Road there. So that's a concern. As we went through this process, I was glad to hear that that's been addressed. Is that correct with these plans now where those gas pumps are going to be on the property?
That's correct.
On the northwest corner?
Yes, and that's why it was put up here along West Maple Road on its own lot. The lot's substantially larger. There are double the fueling stations, which means there's double the pumps. There's one way in and one way out, and there's actually 200-plus feet more stacking at this location than there is on Dodge Street. So it allows for a lot more stacking to get into the fueling station to fuel up without getting onto the road itself. So all the stacking is really, occurs on the lot itself. And so you won't have any stacking out here onto Evans. All the stacking will be here, and that lot was sized accordingly based upon that.
And as the attorney for Costco, I'm assuming this isn't the first time you've talked about the traffic issues with gas pumps.
It's not.
Ran into, at least people that go there like myself, ran into that. So that's, I think that's a good step that's obviously been taken way before it got here to address those concerns, because that is a safety issue. So that's off the table, and I think Costco, obviously with the number of jobs that are going to be at this location, and in the times of inflation and people's budgets that are really constrained, I think this, all the work that's gone into this, that I've learned here today and before this, that the steps have been taken to address, you know, development and the concerns that are going along with it, and what we've learned in the past from Costco. And they're a good partner with, again, the good jobs that they're bringing, but also wanting to get it right for the people that live out there. I know it's a huge, big center that's going up. But again, with what's going on today, I think it'll be a great addition to, for Omaha and people to use that and get the economic benefits of shopping there. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, Costco wants to be a good neighbor, and that's what they strive for. And they want to, you know, fit into the fabric of the neighborhood and make sure that it's safe for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. I too wanted to just address some of the safety concerns. And I followed this as I was going through Planning Board, and again, we're at the preliminary plat stage, and if there are any changes as it relates to traffic studies along the way, I'm sure those will be taken into consideration. But I, you know, I know it was, it's, there were many people at Planning Board that voiced some opposition about it, not so much against Costco, but against, they had some safety concerns. And I really think, I'm looking at the, you know, the site plan, and really think that a lot of that was truly taken into consideration by Costco when they were proposing this. And as Mr. Jovan pointed out, you know, having control over the suppliers to the facility, as well as the orientation of the building to the north and to Maple Street, so that it's not conflicting with the neighborhood, as well as when you take the traffic, if there's traffic not entering the site from Maple Street, coming off of 180th, as it comes down Emmett, there's, you know, it's very obvious where you're going to be turning in. So it keeps that traffic again out of the neighborhood. So I think there are, I think to address the concerns of Mr. Elafson and some of the other neighbors that came out at Planning Board but aren't here today, some of those concerns, I think, truly were considered and addressed in this preliminary plat and plan. So I'll be supportive of this, and I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion, a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Plermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16 to consider a Class D liquor license for a SOA Rue boutique located at 9949 Reddick Circle.
This item was later from October 18th. The public hearing and vote are today. Proponents,
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ajay Pradhana, and my address is 9949 Reddick Circle. I am here for liquor license, Class D.
Thank you. Here to answer questions?
No. That's I am requesting. Actually, I have my business over there, and I want to add my liquor license over there.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion, a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Plermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17 to consider a Class D liquor license for the winery located at 741 North 98th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Holly Jones with H.J. Deli LLC, managing member of the LLC and DBA, the winery. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I know this is, I don't know if I can say something about it, but if you want to, I'll yield the floor if you do. I had some questions, but go ahead.
Go ahead.
So this is going into the old winery.
It is.
Was wondering if you could tell, it's kind of a similar concept then, what was there before?
A little bit different, so it'll be smaller. We've down- A little bit different. So it'll be smaller. We've downsized the previous owners of the winery, which was the Deo family who had that business for about 30 years in that specific address, 741 North 98th Street. It's a downsize from that. They had a wine and spirits store predominantly with a deli and ours is kind of the flip of that. We're more of a deli with less wine sales. So it's originally, their store was 4,800 square feet. This is 2,200 square feet. So it's about in half. The true business proposition here is to run a deli and sell wine. So it'll, it'll basically be a sandwich shop.
Okay.
More so than not.
I was glad to see the, the winery coming back into existence and wish you good luck.
Yeah. We, uh, we've had some really positive embracement from the neighborhood and previous customers to reopen this business. So I think it'll do very well.
Good.
Is that a motion, Mr. Harding?
Motion to approve.
Because if it is, I'll second it. I think, I agree it's going to be a great reuse of what used to be a very, very popular establishment there near West Roads. So I'm glad to see you go in. And I know we have a brand new manager of the West Roads Mall too. So we'll make sure you guys get connected as partners there.
Yep.
Great. Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18 to consider a Class C liquor license for Lyle's Pizza and Patio located at 5213 Levenworth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This application did receive support from the Neighborhood Association. There was one letter of communication in opposition with respect to selling packaged liquor, but I'd just like to let you all know that it is a Class C request, but 99% of the sales are going to be on premise as it's a pizza and wine bar. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President, Sean.
Good for you.
What are the hours going to be for this?
11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
And Monday through Sunday?
Correct.
Okay. And the patio, music on the patio there?
No. I mean, perhaps some piped in music, but nothing. No bands or any loud music.
Okay. And you, you mentioned that there was support from the Neighborhood Association. They submitted a letter that's on the attachment for our agenda today.
Correct.
And the, the opposition letter, so you touch on that. It's 99% of the time it'll be just, 99% of the time it'll be what? I go get a pizza to go and what? I can get a six pack of beer or bottle of wine with it?
Right. But you, you'd probably go there to dine in or, or maybe if you get a carry out order, you have a glass of wine while you wait.
Okay. And one of the other things was maybe trash in the neighborhood or litter? I'm assuming the, the owner that I spoke to this week, Phil, this isn't his first rodeo in town owning a business. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is actually his 14th liquor license application. Great reputation in the city.
Okay. And, and I want to ask you this. I'm not going to answer it for you, but if there was ever, ever issues with loud noise, which you've already addressed that, with issues with trash, a good business owner that's been in town, this established, understands that, that the neighbors might be concerned and he would, will you pledge to address that if there's issues with?
100%. All, all members of this application are local residents of Omaha. They want to be good neighbors. They have businesses all throughout the city and, and are good neighbors, I think unanimously.
No, and I, I welcome him here. I'll make the motion to, to support this today. And I know Phil lives in my district, so I always make an extra special attention to detail when somebody's opening a business in the district, that lives in the district, that owns several other businesses, that those are jobs for the neighborhood. It's six blocks from my house, so I can imagine winding up and getting some pizza and maybe a cold beer on the patio. And I'll test out that piped in music on the patio to make sure.
Yeah, without loud music, I'm sure.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 19 through 30 were held on October 18th. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 31 through 45 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And if our council members reference the applicant on items 31 and 32 as by Zoom if needed. Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 46 in ordinance to approve a non-exclusive public row license agreement with Google Fiber Inc. for a period of 10 years.
The vote on number 46 is today. There's a motion in a second to approve. I may have a couple more questions before we take a vote, just for confirmation. And I believe these questions are for Mr. Endenbosh, who has joined us, and then maybe one question for a Google representative too. We did talk about this extensively last week. This is the proposition of adding, of adding Google Fiber as a broadband provider throughout the city and the associated contract. And I think everyone was welcoming of that, that prospect and what that could mean to the market and competition for consumers and the investment in the, in the community. But some questions around a state law provision. And then on my, on, on behalf of myself, maybe a couple of our council members too, some questions about the, the build out proposition. So, Mr. Endenbosh, I think since that last hearing when we had a conversation, you did come out with another letter that reaffirmed your position of the city's interpretation of state law, that the 2% fee on gross revenues that's contemplated in the contract cannot be charged right now, but could be charged in the future should state law change. Is that a correct assessment?
Bernard Endenbosh, Deputy City Attorney. Yeah, there was a letter that I delivered to the Cox representative that was dated the same day as the public hearing, responding to the letter that they had sent the previous week. I have not aware of anything new or anything that changes my view. As I said last week, I'd, I'd like to be able to because quite frankly, I would like to be able to advise you that you could, that I think you could charge a fee.
And should that state law change, the way the contract's written is, it would automatically go into effect?
Yeah, there's a period of time, a staggering period of time. Obviously, if the state law were changed this year, the reality is that time period, I think it's 180 days in the contract, would probably, that 100 days, 80 days would probably elapse before that Google was providing any service. But yes, it would automatically occur, but we would have to, there is a, a gap in time from when we have to provide notice to them to when they would be responsible for paying the, the fee.
Okay. And I think there was broad agreement that day from the council and from the mayor's office and Google and Cox, that that's something the city would support going forward in a legislative session, or at least have conversations with our senators about that item.
Seemed to be a good idea.
Yeah. Okay. And then maybe, I don't know, Rachel, are you the representative today Just your name and address for the record again.
Rachel Merlo, Google Fiber, 908 Broadway Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Andy Simpson, Google Fiber, same address.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. My remaining question to you is what we talked about a little bit last week, but there was a little more detail this morning when we talked about the build out proposition. So in some, in some contracts, at least in some cable contracts we have that include similar services, there have been some requirements of a company to build out as they intended to provide service throughout the city. And the idea was that they couldn't just build in certain parts of the city, but they had to do it in an equitable fashion. And in particular, for my interest, provides service and build out to north and south Omaha and areas of poverty that I think perhaps need to service the worst. So my question, when we, we talked about it last week, was your intention to build out in terms of timeframe, what parts of the city are you going to start to the best you can, you know, predict at this point? Do you want to talk about what we discussed this morning?
Sure. So some of the things that we're in the early stages of and based on approval today that we'll be going to take more material steps forward is the, the design, the civil engineering around where do we get the internet, the public internet coming into the city? And that will be the base from then which we can build out from. And so you might think of it as a little bit of a spider web in terms of, you know, where, where the public internet and where our circuits come into the metro. And that may be in more than one location, then we can begin our, our construction and build out to the neighborhoods around those and continue to expand. The, the early plan, and it looks like right now, is to have those aggregation points, as we call them, relatively central, centrally located in the geography of Omaha, that we could then build from there, from kind of relatively central outwards. There are timing components to the, all, all those designs, the securing of the property, the securing of the circuits, as well as securing of, you know, real estate and working with the Public Works Department in terms of permitting, inspector cadence and, and timing and some of those factors that'll go into the ultimate kind of timing and sequencing as we go. It's also, you know, in our business interest to cover as many homes and, and to cover especially those more dense areas first because we have more consumers per linear foot. And linear foot is how our construction costs are measured and how we pay vendors and contractors. And so the, the more lots per linear foot is, is a better business case for us. And so that's the main kind of consideration and factor that goes into our planning. So it is more of a civil engineering exercise rather than a social engineering exercise that we go through.
I would add two points to that is that factors that are most likely to influence our ability to serve an area are going to be things like density and other areas of the geography that might make a build a little bit more tricky, like say if there were railroad crossings, for example, that we have to figure out how to get around to make sure that we can extend the plant. Secondly is, we would begin serving areas as they become ready. So as the construction happens and we're able to turn addresses over and make them serviceable, we open those signups one section at a time. So over time, there are going to be places served sequentially and we wouldn't be, say, waiting for the whole build out to happen before anyone in Omaha would be able to sign up.
Okay. And in our conversation this morning, you know, should everything go as you foresee? You think that could be 50,000 households per year about, which presumably could take four or five years?
Yeah, that's the pace that we've seen in other metros where we've been building kind of in, again, that's not in year one, so I don't want to make any false promises or claims. But it will take some time to build the relationship with Public Works and that, that cadence that we have. And with all the others, the locating firms in the city will be very important to our ability to go, you know, with speed and, and reach those. So there, there's a lot that weighs on us and our team's ability to mobilize as well as the interaction with the city and then some other players in there. But yeah, that would be our ideal scenario is to reach that 50,000, roughly 50,000 a year so that that holds to that kind of four or five year timeframe that we discussed last week.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Briefly, I know last week we covered a lot of things and Public Works worked with you guys prior to coming to our agenda. And besides the competition, which always is a good thing on price because everything's going up, that you guys come into the marketplace, aside from the fact of what we talked about, I think it's LB184 that hopefully the city, through our law department lobbying, that we can get that change. And you guys were on the record that you would support that if needed, which was appreciated. And the smaller things that we talked about, and I got your emails and your commitment on the record last week, and again this week, I'll just ask you that when yards get torn up, it's not going to be in the street, it's going to be on the other side of the sidewalks. And the commitment you guys have, the people that are going to be our constituents that want those services, but if yards get torn up, it's not a huge thing, but it is a huge thing.
It is. Understood.
And you guys made the commitment that there'll be a contact, and correct me if I'm wrong, because sometimes when I do it on recollection, I might. So there'll be contact information when you're going to be in the neighborhoods. And then if some gets torn up, the numbers will be on there, that the commitment you made, that you will rectify that working with that individual landowner. Did I miss anything? Was I incorrect on anything?
You are not incorrect. You've got it right. Where we will, in advance of construction, do what we call door hanging, where there's notice put on each resident's household to say, "Construction is about to happen. Here are the phone numbers you need if you want to ask questions about how to get our service, or if you need to report that restoration wasn't done to your satisfaction, or that the contractor has done something in a way that caused you any concern." We want to be able to address those instances specifically. Also, we've already had a few thousand Omaha residents sign up for our own email list to say, "Please keep us informed about what's going on in Omaha, Google Fiber." So we have already folks who've given us permission to keep them directly updated on what our plans are.
And another statement, I'm not under any illusions as managing the build team that there may be an occasional person that's frustrated resident that comes to you all. And so knowing that's going to happen and construction is challenging, we do our best to avoid it and we want to remedy it as quickly as possible. And it's something that we do actively in, in all of our markets. As again, what I shared last week, every one of these is a prospective customer. And so we want that experience to be as positive as possible.
Appreciate that. The mitigation's a huge thing. I mean, that, in customer service, Google didn't start yesterday. You know how long of a ways that goes, the steps you're taking that you're, you've committed here today and in prior meetings. And again, I got your emails. So this, I'll be supporting this today and appreciate the outreach you did because it's important and it's good for our community and good for competition. And I'll be glad to support it today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second to approve. Mr. Harding.
What's going on for some reason? Are you doing that to me?
Nope. But I, I see it now and you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, Bernard, I had a question for you. Thanks. As, I think just a real simple one, but I want to make sure it's clear that if and when the, the statute is changed, it's not such that we have to make it retroactive because the revenues will be based upon the gross revenues, not as like a per lane mile of, of right of way used, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Bernard Endenbosh, Deputy City Attorney, City Attorney, correct.
Okay. That, I just wanted to make sure that was clear and on the record. That, that's all I had except to say that, and I've, I've asked our law department and our legislative committee, I don't, I'm, I'm sure others may have already as well too, but asked them to, to draft language for the, the next session of the unicameral to, to take this issue up so that we have the ability to then charge for the use of the right of way for broadband.
Thank you. Motion in a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 46 is approved, seven to zero. Item 47 in ordinance to accept and authorize the fiscal year 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Wellness and Fitness Program Award.
The vote on number 47 is today. Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 47 is approved, seven to zero. Item 48, a resolution to approve the contract for professional services with Kelly Plucker LLC for supplemental lobbying services for the city of Omaha.
Public hearing and vote on number 48 is today. Proponents, please.
Matt, who's the city of Omaha law department here to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, President, council members. My name is Julia Plucker, 2804 South 87th Avenue. I'm here with my partner, Sean Kelly, and we're excited about this opportunity and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 48? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
I just want to say that I'm pleased, and in fact, I will make the motion to approve this, this vote today. That, Ms. Plucker, actually, you, you haven't been our lobbyist, but I've met you and I've known you and I've seen you down in Lincoln. And I want to say over the years, you've actually helped me in getting connected with the people I needed to connect to down in the legislature when I was wanting to do things. So I already know what your capabilities are. You've been nice enough to actually just kind of help anybody that needs the help along the way. And I really appreciate it and seen the work you've done for your other clients. And I've worked with you on some of that. So I'm, I'm very pleased that you were selected after this RFP process. And I think that you and Mr. Kelly will do an excellent job for the city. And, and as I see things work down there, I think it's something that we really need, especially as the largest city in the state of Nebraska. We really need somebody We really need somebody that, with kind of your connections, your knowledge of how it works down there, that can assist the city in getting legislation passed that is really important to us. And then, more importantly, keeping us informed of what legislation may be getting passed because that's something that we don't often think about. It's trying to keep up with all the bills that are kind of being thrown out there in the session. So we know what we may want, but we also need to know what we may not want. And so we appreciate your kind of watching out for us and keeping us informed and communicating with us here at the city. So I think I did a motion to approve.
Second.
Give it a second. Thanks.
Motion and a second. Ms. Plucker, I might just call you up for a second too. Your name, just one more time.
Julia Plucker, 2804 South 87th Avenue.
Thank you. So I also wanted council members to know and also the general public to know that the City Council does have a legislative committee that takes up and relates to our issues in Lincoln and will do so if this contract is approved today with you as our representative. It's a fairly new committee. We haven't had it but for the last year to address just these very types of issues and other issues that don't otherwise fit well into our committee structures. So the intent of this committee going forward would be to meet more often and discuss more often the city's interests in Lincoln, especially as the session gets started in January and February, because lots of things happen very quickly down there, as you know. We did meet with both Sean and Julia as a committee when the RFP was selected and had a discussion about balancing mayoral interests and city council interests. This is a city contract, of course, and we're usually on the same page as the administration, but not always. So in your position, you'll need to kind of balance those interests and make sure we're in close conversation about those thoughts and positions. And then perhaps lastly, with successful lobby firms like yours, you frequently have lots of candidates and lots of clients in your work and in Lincoln, and that is the case here. So we had a substantial conversation about potential conflicts of interest too. And there is a special provision in this contract that delineates how that would work should there be a potential conflict of interest. You notify the city attorney and then be in conversation with all of us to make sure there aren't any opposing views amongst your other clients that would be in any way be a conflict with the city. And we would discuss how to remedy that situation if needed, right?
Yep, absolutely. And what I would say back to the balancing of the interests between the mayor and the city council, I think the law legislative committee is a great idea. I think having certain council members on that committee focus on which bills you want, which bills you don't want. Things do move quickly. It's something that needs feedback frequently, you know, ASAP. So I think having that committee is a great start and a great idea. We're excited to forge those relationships and work through all of the issues with you. And with regard to conflicts, of course, we don't anticipate conflicts. We take those seriously. We saw the provision in the contract and are very committed to bringing those issues up and trying to get resolutions that satisfy all parties involved as quickly as possible.
And then lastly, as it applies to liquor licenses too, I know we talked about this a little bit as well. We're talking about Kelly Plucker here, which is a different entity than Mr. Kelly's work with liquor licenses. But nevertheless, there are lots of liquor licenses that come to the city council. We frequently do have issues before the liquor commission. It's my understanding that Mr. Kelly would no longer take up those routine liquor licenses before the city council, right?
Yeah. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Just for clarification, our firm, when I appeared before you guys today on a liquor license, that is in fact Kelly Plucker, so I just want to make sure that distinction is clear. But no, I do not anticipate us being on opposite sides at the Liquor Control Commission. Hope you know what, most cases you see in front of, that we bring in front of you are fairly non-controversial, and we intend to keep it that way.
All right. Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Item forty-nine, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement with the University of Nebraska at Omaha in amount up to $200,000.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Motion and a second. Roll call.
May I interrupt for a second?
No, you can't interrupt.
I didn't hear you.
A call to vote for number forty-nine, please.
Harding, Johnson.
Speak into the microphone or face the justice.
I heard it.
Continue.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty-nine is approved, seven to zero. Item fifty, in ordinance to acquire private property for the paving of Ridgewood Avenue and Poppleton Avenue in the Loveland Edition.
Public hearing on number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Just hearing today, I think.
Item fifty-one, in ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri River NRD for the North Downtown Riverfront Pedestrian Connector Bridge Project.
Public hearing on number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize the continued partnership that the city has with the Papio NRD on this project. It illustrates that long beneficial partnership that is for the public good, and I think it's important to recognize that. General Manager John Winkler and Chair Sapinski and Thompson on the NRD board, it's not publicized a lot, but it really is a great partnership, as evident by this ordinance today that I won't make a motion on, I'll do that next week. But that's really, it's good for taxpayers and the public good, these partnerships that we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Now for the lights, next item.
Item fifty-two, in ordinance to approve the change in the street name for the segment between Twenty-second Street and the terminus west of Twenty-fourth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, sir. This is, my name is Terry Hester. I'm president of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 279 here in Omaha. We're here today to discuss James W. Faust, which is a Medal of Honor winner. I'd like to give you a brief of why we're here to start out with. We have a couple individuals that's in support. We have Pete Festerpun from Post One, Legion Post One, he is here to support. We have Michael DeBolt, the Colonel, Michael DeBolt, for the ROTC program at the Omaha Plug Schools. I also have Tom Brown. He is the president of the Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Association. Tom Hellcat is the secretary of Chapter 279. And Joe Manzmannelli is vice president of Chapter 279.
And Terry, just your address for the record, too.
Oh, my address is 3316 North 207 Terrace, Elkhorn, Nebraska.
Thank you.
Just a quick thing. James Faust was born in 1946 and he graduated from Central High School, went to UNO, and he joined the Army in 1967. I just want to read a quick thing how he was killed. PFC Faust was participated in a recon enforced mission when his unit formed a perimeter defense for the night. PFC Faust, together with three other American soldiers, occupied a position, thickly vegetated area facing wood line. Faust detected three Vietcom maneuvering toward his position and after alerting the other men, directed an accurate upon the enemy soldiers, silently two of them. The third Vietnam soldier managed to escape the thick vegetation and throw a hand grenade into Faust's position. Without hesitation, Faust shouted to his comrades and leaped upon the grenade, absorbing the blast with his body to save the other three men. He was awarded the Medal of Honor. His death was May 14, 1968. He was there less than a year almost. He was awarded the Medal of Honor in 1970, April of 1970. He was awarded the Medal of Honor by Richard Nixon. He is laid to rest at the Fort McPherson National Cemetery in Maxwell, Nebraska, along his dad was a World War II Vietnam veteran, and they're laid to rest side by side. Ladies and gentlemen, this is over 50 years old. It's time. We have got people that have parks, bridges, streets, and everything else named after Medal of Honor winners. There's only seven Medal of Honor winners in the entire state of Nebraska. This gentleman has been lost for 50 years. It's time for change. It's this, a street has been through the planning board, it's been approved, it's been paid for. We would like to get this going and get it done. It's way past time. If we get it approved, I'm talking to Mr. Festerson, we would like to have the ceremony on Veterans Day, which is November 11. We don't have a time established yet because everything hinges on you people. We want to have a ceremony. We'll invite you down. We will invite the mayor down. The central ROTC program will be present, honor them with their flags. And we have her, his sister and husband, which he is a Vietnam veteran, are coming in from Pocahontas, Iowa. They have a brother and a sister. She does, she has a son and a daughter. They are going to come in to honor her brother. That's all I have to say. I would like to have welcome and have speak Michael DeBolt.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you again for the opportunity. 606 South 93rd Street. My role and responsibility is I'm the Director of Army Instruction for Omaha Public Schools' Junior ROTC Program. And each year, our students, they come up with a class project, if you will, or a community service project. So this project actually began last year with our junior ROTC students at Central High School and working with our Vietnam veterans and American Legion Post One. And again, with the class of 1967 and 1968 at Central High School. This is how the project came to be. And we're looking forward to hosting, you know, the Faust family, the Vietnam veterans and the local veterans, hopefully on November 11 of next year. Invite you all come down to Central High School. And again, it's the street coming into the Stevens Stadium. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thanks, Mike. Other proponents? Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Fred Tisdale, Omaha Post One, American Legion. My address is 345 South 71st Street. And I'm also here to propose that we do name the street after Mr. Faust. He is long overdue, like President Terry Hester said. We've had a couple other Medal of Honor winners from the state from Omaha. You know, Mr. Carey has a bridge named after him. Miguel Keith has a park named after him, and he also has a ship named after him. They were all killed in Vietnam. This young man has a plaque with his name on it in Memorial Park behind the columns. He also has a small plaque at Central with his name on it. As far as I know, that's the only recognition this young man has had. He got, somehow he fell through the cracks. And we'd just like to get it corrected at this time. And on Veterans Day, which Post One honors a lot of people up at Memorial Park at 11:00 on the 11th, I hope to see you all there. We would like to, if not possible, if it's not possible to have the sign posted on the street, at least we'd like to have the sign available so that Mr. Faust's sister can come from the eastern part of Iowa and at least accept the sign that's going to be posted. If it all works out, we would like to have the posting done at 4:00 that afternoon while she's still in town. But that is going to depend on the City of Omaha and the council. So I thank you for your time and thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. I noticed what I say, thank you all for coming down and being here with us today and sharing that remarkable story. This is something I've been working on for about a year or two. Mr. Tisdale first brought it to my attention, and I appreciated his remarks here today and totally agree that more needs to be done for this individual. And I was pleased to attend that first meeting at Central High School with the JROTC program with Mr. DeBolt and those students. And it was really neat to see how this came about. It was really their initiative. They went through the process of notifying all the associated property owners and working with the city, which I'm sure took much longer than they were anticipating. But they showed great perseverance in providing this honor for an honorable Nebraskan. So I'm very pleased to support this here today and extra proud, as a Central High School alumnus myself, to be involved in the project and to help change what is Davenport Street, right in front of where most people drop off their kids at Central to school every day that leads right to the stadium and right to the new Galesayers statue as well. So a very prominent location that is well deserved. I also want to thank Councilmember Johnson for her support. This street is actually within her district and she was on board right away and signed off right away. And I know agrees this is a great idea. I am assured, by the way, and I'm confident this gets approved next week when we can vote on it. I'm assured by the city sign shop that the signs will be ready. I think the remaining question is, will the poles be ready to actually be installed? So I want to connect you with Mr. Tyler today, who's back here from Public Works. Perhaps you can have a conversation afterwards or when we're done speaking here, just to make sure we have everybody coordinated and you have the right contact to pursue, to make sure that happens because I agree that'd be an awesome celebration to have together with his family that afternoon at Central High School. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was, I agree with Terry's comments too, that, you know, we have bridges and other facility, buildings and streets. I'd almost disagree with you that I think it should be more than a street. But I think, as Mr. Festerson just pointed out, the proximity of where this is and what it means to the, not only the community, but to Central High School and that specific area, I think it's a well-deserved honor. I think we sometimes forget the price that many people pay to protect our liberties. Not too long ago, we renamed a post office for another gentleman who showed honor and valor in Charles Jackson French and renaming the post office in Benson. And I think this is a great reminder of what we should be talking about and teaching our kids is that there is honor and we should respect those that pay the ultimate price to protect our freedoms. So I will be more than honored to vote in favor of this next week when it comes before us for our final vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Thank you. And I wish there was some way that we could vote on this today, but unfortunately, we've got rules that we can't do that. But for your planning purposes, I wanted to let you know I fully support this. And it sounds to me like, from what we've heard around here today, you probably have that, so I wanted you to know I fully support this and I look forward to voting yes on this next week. So thank you very much for all your efforts. And I think it's great that this actually was started by the kids and then embraced by his class and by you all here. What a great opportunity for the kids to get involved with you, for you to get involved with this generation and then for them to actually work hard and spend the time to get it done. So I just think it's very impressive all the way around. And Mr. Faust, I think it's just another, something he'd be proud of, of how this came about as well, since he was such an honorable guy. So thank you. You've got my vote next week.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I, thanks for your work on this, Pete. I know you spent a lot of time on this. And this is a great, as Councilmember Melton said, it's great to see, obviously, the veterans that are here today, there are several of you. Thank you for your service and for coming here today. And it's a great teaching moment, what you've been through, Connor, Mr. Faust and his service to our country that laid down his life. The students- The students in the ROTC at Central, that's a great gift that you veterans, many gifts you give to the community. But when you educate students, working with the collective body like this, with the great work with Council President Festerson to support this, that's a great learning experience to remember the service that kids today weren't alive like I was in high school, to understand what Vietnam veterans from brothers or friends of kids in our neighborhood that were in Vietnam. So I'll absolutely be supporting this next week, and as I did on a previous item, I was going to make a motion to support it because you're so excited to support it, but as Amy said, we have rules, so we got to wait on that. But you absolutely will have my 100% support, and thank you again for coming down and taking the time to put the work into this well-deserved honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleagues have already said a lot about all of your efforts, and I am in complete support of this initiative. I do want to echo these sentiments. Teamwork makes the dream work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
I have a question for law. Is there a way to suspend the rules and just go ahead and take this vote today? Is it possible?
Matt Kuzey, Law Department. That is a great question for my best friend, the clerk.
It is not. It's laid out in charter, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, I'm a new guy. Thought I'd try. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights, but obviously, we look forward to approving this next week and want to thank you all for your service, and we look forward to seeing you on Veterans Day as well. Thanks for being here. Next item.
Item 53, an ordinance to approve a bid award to Priority One Fitness in the total amount of $78,080 for exercise, maintenance, and repair service for the Parks Department.
Public hearing on number 53 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 54 through 58. Ordinances to accept and authorize grant dispersments for the Police Department.
Public hearing on items 54, 55, 56, 57, and 58 are today.
Good afternoon. Amber Parker, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 59, an ordinance to approve various purpose bonds, Series 2022, in the amount of $100 million.
Public hearing on number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Curtis, I thought we should just have you address this item for us today. I think it is ultimately routine in nature, but it is $100 million, and so something of this nature. We want to make sure it gets addressed and has some explanation behind it.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. This is a $100 million bond offer. It is all new money. Because of interest rates going up, we were not able to refinance. Would have made this offering even bigger. As you remember, mostly what we do is aggregate what's in the CIP over a period of time that we think money will be spent, and that's really all this is. It's money out of the CIP, including, if you remember, the new street preservation bonds, which account for 20 to 40 million each year.
Great, thank you. I was going to ask you to say $100 million again for the record, just like Dr. Evil.
Steve Curtis, City Finance, $100 million.
All right. Good job. That's our last item. I do want to recognize Councilmember Harding for a motion that pertains to our non-action items.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to lay over the public hearing and vote on items number 82, 83, and 84 to the November 15, 2022 meeting.
A second? Motion and second? Roco.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Mr. President. Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, items 60 through 91 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second. Roco.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:34.